Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Kent City Council Meeting for Tuesday, July 16, 2024. If you could all please rise and join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kim, could you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor Ralph?
Here.
Council President Corr. Councilmember Boyce?
Here.
Councilmember Boyd?
Here.
Councilmember Fincher?
Here.
Councilmember Larmour?
Here.
Councilmember Michaud?
Here.
Councilmember Troutner?
Here.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Kim. Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. There was a new agenda published adding an executive session earlier today. So, other than that, any changes?
No changes from staff.
All right. Then, having no changes, the agenda before you as published motion would be in order to approve.
So move.
Second.
And a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Moving on to public communications, this evening, under public recognition, we have a proclamation. Always a fun time of the year. We are going to be talking tonight about National Night Out. So I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation and then invite our community education unit. Sarah and Stacy, if you would like to come up to the front, we'll, I'll read the proclamation, we'll do a picture, and then you can tell everybody why they need to sign up and participate in National Night Out. So it says, "Whereas the National Association of Town Watch is sponsoring a unique nationwide crime and drug prevention program on August 6, 2024, called National Night Out. And whereas the city of Kent plays a vital role in assisting our police department through joint crime and drug prevention efforts across the city and is supporting National Night Out locally. And whereas it is important that all of our residents in the city of Kent know the value of crime prevention programs and the impact that citizen participation can have on reducing crime and creating a safe and vibrant community. Whereas National Night Out provides an opportunity for the community to come together as neighbors for an evening of celebration and fun that will strengthen our bonds and unify us in our goals of creating a strong community. Now therefore, I, Dana Ralph, Mayor of Kent, do hereby proclaim August 6, 2024, as National Night Out in the city of Kent and encourage all residents, neighborhoods, and communities to participate in the city's crime prevention efforts to more tightly weave the fabric of the community and strengthen community spirit."
Thank you very much, Council and Mayor Ralph, for having us here this evening. I'm Sarah Wood. I'm one of our community education coordinators with the Kent Police Department, one of your fierce coordinators of this wonderful event, National Night Out. It feels like we were just here a year ago, like it was yesterday, but here we are again to celebrate another night out. I'm sure some people are wondering what National Night Out is. It's a national event where the idea is that neighbors get to know each other, come out of their houses, gather in their driveways and their cul-de-sacs, have a potluck, have some ice cream, and get to know each other. It's a proven block watch crime prevention strategy, and every year we have really great participation across the city. Some cities do one big event in a park. We encourage our neighbors to do their own events in their own neighborhoods because it's really about neighbors getting to know each other. And I'm going to let Stacy update you all as to where we're at in our planning this year.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. Currently, we have 45 neighborhoods registered. They have until the end of July, July 30th, to register. So we, yes, we usually have around 80 events every year, so we're expecting more. And then we have about 45 visitors from throughout the city departments who have signed up to visit as well. So what we do is we put people together into visiting teams, so you could have public works mixed with police, parks mixed with council, whoever it might be, and then we assign each of the visiting teams at least two or three events to go and visit. And the neighborhoods love to have people from throughout the city come and say hi, patrol cars, fire trucks. They have a great time. And it's fun. They, different neighborhoods do it. Some do it big. They have food trucks and games and water slides, and some have dessert potlucks. We've seen talent shows. It just depends on what every neighborhood wants to do. But everybody looks forward to this event every year.
Right. Very excited about it. It is one of the highlights of the year. Also, just to add, our council meeting is a regularly scheduled council meeting, but it is at 5:00 on that night, so that way all of council can, we can get the business done and then get out and participate. So, very much looking forward to it. How do folks sign up?
Thank you. They can go to kentwa.gov/nno, so National Night Out, nno, and there's a link to our registration page on there.
All right. Any questions? All right. Thank you both.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda is community events. Council, Council President Proten, I'm not sure exactly what the appropriate term is there.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this has some community event going on Cecil Showware Center. July 25th through the 20th, we got Reed Digging the Well of Revival Conference. August 3rd, we got a showware shootout, a three-on-three, very famous basketball tournament. August 17th, The Lamb of God. September 8th, Marco Reddesta Go Tour. And then September 11th, we have our Seattle Thunderbird with their preseason game against the Victoria Royal. And then September 28th, Thunderbird home opener against Wenatchee Wow. And October 5th, we got Junior H return after his sold-out cancer show in 2023. So he's coming back. And then last, October 13th, we got the KISW Halloween Hula Boo, that's what it sounds like, starring Gar Smac.
You gonna be there?
I don't know. We'll see. That's all we have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Fincher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just want to remind everybody that we have our fantastic summer concert series going on Wednesday afternoons at West Fenwick Park, Wednesday evenings at Kent Station, and Thursday evenings up at Lake Meridian. Wonderful music, and on our website, the front page of the website, there's a calendar there, and you can get all the dates and times.
All right. Councilmember Michaud?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Park and Recreation Month continues. Tomorrow, we have Kick It with Kent Parks. That will be after the concert at West Fenwick Park, and that will be a competition on the Futsal Court. And then next Wednesday is Popsicles in the Park at Morrel Meadows from 11 to noon. And the following Wednesday is a royal party celebrating Friendships and Park and Recreation Month, and I hear that there will be Disney princesses at this event at Van Doren's Landing Park.
Fun stuff coming up. All right. That brings us down to the last item we have under public communications this evening, and it is our public safety report. Joining us is Chief Padilla. Good evening.
Hello. Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council, it's my pleasure to bring you tonight's report. This one will be on the shorter end of things, but we'll start with some good opportunity to recognize some of our newest officers. I'd like to begin our swearing-in ceremony by calling up Officer, Officer Michaela Wiley, Officer Brian Pick, and Officer Chris Flowers. Please come up for us. All right, welcome. It's the awkward where you turn your back on the council and face the TV there. There you go. Okay, good. All righty. So let's introduce each one of them, tell you a little bit about them, and we'll have them introduce their family and friends that are in the audience. First up, on the far left for the audience, far right for council, is Officer Michaela Wiley. She is a lateral officer coming to us from Aurora, Colorado. She lived there prior to coming to Washington. Her education background is in criminal justice with a minor in pre-law and philosophy. As I said, she was in Aurora for a handful of years with that department before coming here. When we asked her why she chose Kent PD, she is quoted as saying, "I have always loved Washington State, began researching police departments within the state. Kent stood out to me when I was looking for departments, it's been a good place to work. I liked when we visited Kent and wanted to be a part of keeping it safe." When Michaela's not at work, she enjoys being in the outdoors, hiking and being outside, so perfect place for that. So, ladies and gentlemen, Officer Michaela Wiley. Tough crowd tonight. I'll leave the class anyway. Okay, did you have anybody in the audience you'd like to introduce?
My cousin.
All right. Come. Thanks for being here tonight. Next up in the middle there, I'd like to introduce Officer Brian Pick. He is born and raised in Puyallup, Washington, where he lived. Have him out of order. We have him out of order. Okay. Thank you for fixing that. He grew up playing sports of all kinds, specifically baseball, and has a passion for that, both playing and coaching throughout the years. He's been married to his wife Jessica since April of 2021, and they, he says that he's blessed to have two amazing stepkids, Landon and Brooklyn, and they welcomed their son, Jamison, into the world just this December 21st. So, busy, busy parents there. His education, he started his career at Pierce College, and then where he was playing baseball, and then transferred to Eastern Washington University and graduated with a bachelor's degree in interdisciplinary studies. Prior to Kent PD, he worked as, at the Sportsman's Warehouse, then soon after took position at the Washington State Department of Corrections, where he served as a community corrections officer, starting in 2016. He then moved to become a member of our department, and he chose Kent because of the opportunities that came with working for such a progressive and respected agency. He said, "The city of Kent is such a diverse community," and so he wanted to be a part of serving and protecting that. And he says, "I believe that Kent will not only allow me to grow personally, but also professionally." When he's not at work, everything's about his kids and sports and family. He likes to barbecue and getting his family to where they need to be. Something interesting about him, he noted here that, and I'm going to, don't look at me, he shared this, so I'm going to share it. He was hospitalized for a rare condition called transverse myelitis. Yeah. I've never heard of that before, but it caused him to be paralyzed from the waist down for a substantial period of time. It took a lot of treatment, a lot of physical therapy to get him back to 100%. He shares that as something that he points to as, in terms of his resilience and fortitude, indicating that you can accomplish incredible things with hard work. Pretty much can do anything you can put your mind to, is what he's quoted as the saying. So, ladies and gentlemen, Officer Brian Pick. Ryan, anybody you want to introduce?
I have my wife Jessica, and then my son Landon in Brooklyn, and Jamison in the stroller, and then my mom and dad, Tom and Diana.
Perfect. Welcome. Thank you for being here. And last but certainly not least, we have Officer Chris Flowers. Flowers. Why do I get that wrong all the time? Where, he grew up in Mercer Island and moved to Woodinville when I was, when he was 14. His education is Woodinville High School, where he wrestled and played football. It says where he attended, so something interesting is the legacy of his family at this middle school. So he attended Leota Middle School, where he met his wife. I'm pretty sure they didn't get married at middle school, at least I don't think so. His wife, Tiana. And so circling back, she currently works for that middle school and has been teaching there for the last 20 years. That's not all. They've been married for 20 years, like I noted, they have three children and still live in Woodinville. Their oldest is Tyson, is 16, Nellie's 13, and Cam, who is nine. And then one of the kids is attending Leota, but I missed, which one was that? Nellie's attending. That makes sense in terms of the age. So there's the legacy, right? Parents and all the way down. So interesting. If you want to get married, apparently go to Leota Middle School and pick it up. Prior to Kent, he was an ironworker for 25 years, taught him valuable leadership and great work ethic. Away from work, he described himself as a chauffeur to his kids, to and from sports, and after, and many years of coaching, he is assistant coach when he can, no matter what sport, and he's, "I'm excited to start." He's noted as saying, "I'm excited to start my next career with the Kent Police Department." Ladies and gentlemen, Officer Chris Flowers. Chris, anybody want to introduce before I have the mayor come up?
Yes, my wife, Tiana, my oldest son, Tyson, my daughter, Nellie, my youngest son, Cam, and my mother-in-law, Carol.
Welcome. Thanks for being here. Mayor, would you do the honors, please?
I'd love to. Raise your right hand if you'd like to be up for me. I say your name.
I declare my oath.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
To the United States of America
Ahhh!
The state of Washington
The state of Washington
And the city of Kent
The city of Kent
And that I will uphold the Constitution and laws
I will uphold the Constitution and laws
Of the United States
Of the United States
The state of Washington
The state of Washington
And that I will obey the rules and regulations
That I will obey the rules and regulations
Of the Kent Police Department
Of the Kent Police Department
All right. That's it. Congratulations. Next test is find the one that has your name on it. Do you guys want to take a picture? You can come up and take a picture.
This is Chris Flowers.
Okay, we're going to leave right here. In one, two, three. Fantastic. One more. One, two, three. Do we have anybody else? You got him? Good.
All right, man. Thanks. See you guys. All right. Okay. Couple other things to touch on. This July is Parks Month. I recognize that. It's also Festival Month for the city. Pretty busy time. So, sorry, Councilmember Fincher, this is not a data review, but it's coming. We're getting data, so this is a kind of a high overview. I did want to take a moment to recognize a couple things. One, the Splash event and Fourth of July throughout the city went off very well as compared to years prior, in terms of we didn't have any critical incidents that evening. So, that's a win, and I'll take it. We had, first time in maybe three years, probably doubled the amount of staffing we normally field. It's, what contributed to that are two things. One, we are stabilized in our staffing, so we have our positions filled, so that's, that helps. But the second part was it ended up being on a double shift day, which is Thursday. It's an overlap day, so we had double the normal. So, we were well-staffed, we fielded emphasis teams that were out. There was a large contingent of officers at the Splash Festival, which you're seeing pictures of there. I went up there for a time, and I got to say, it was very pleasing to see a family-friendly oriented event. And yes, there were lots of officers there, but yes, we didn't have so much as any issues whatsoever. Parking and congestion aside, that's always a challenge. It went off very well. I think the city can be very proud of the event that was put on. Parks did a phenomenal job as well. We had our explorers up there, our volunteers, bike unit, traffic unit, so on and so forth. It was a great event, and of course, the fireworks display was amazing. On top of that, we were busy, and we, like I said, I'll be pulling the data, I'm waiting for the data to come in. We got a report earlier this, today, that from Parks Director Julie Perescandola, that we had well over 10,000 attendees at the Splash, and that is significantly up. And I think it's a great sign that people feel like this is a great place to come. So good, good on the city all the way around. And lastly, I want to say thank you to Council President Corr, who's not here tonight, and Councilmember Fincher. They came out for right along to see what was going on that evening, which is always appreciated. One thing I do appreciate about this council is you do take the time to come out right along. Mayor, you've done so for many, many years, and it seems like that's an easy thing, but I think when our elected leaders take that opportunity, builds perspective, and not everybody does it. So, thank you for doing that. Oh, she's, Kim beat me to the punch. So like I said, it's festival season, and so it happens every year, back-to-back. We have Fourth of July followed by Corn Days, our three, three-day festival. More good news on this, this went very well. We had a coordinated effort throughout the city in terms of police, our staffing. We did bring in lots of officers on Bike Patrol. We had help from King County Metro Bikes as well. I want to acknowledge them. And then, of course, you know, our community education units out there. We got briefed this morning that our, we had a city economic development team was out there. Of course, the firefighters were out there too. Those guys are okay. But, great event, no incidents that made the critical incident report at all. I was, it's going to sound weird. I was opening my email every morning going, "Okay, what critical incident happened?" And I didn't get woken up at 3:00 in the morning, so for me, it was a great Cornucopia Days, but it was well-attended, and I think it went off the way it should go off. And it's important to take a quick note, you know, with those back-to-back, we are mandating overtime for a lot of the officers and support staff. So it's a, it's a heavy lift, heavy lift. They love doing it, but also, there were some tired people after last Sunday, for sure. For sure. So, good time with that. And last but not least, just one final plug. In two days at the Starbucks up north there at 224th and 84th, so some people call it East Valley, some people call it Door Central, 84th Avenue South is technically the address. We'll be doing Cop with the Chief. So come hang out with us, come meet our staff, come see what's going on, and get in touch with some of the officers that can address some of the problems going on in the neighborhood. So, looking forward to that on Thursday morning. And with that, Madam Mayor, that completes my report. I'll take any comments or questions.
Thank you, Chief. Councilmember Michaud?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, I just want to thank all the officers who worked the Fourth of July, Cornucopia Days, all these events that are coming up. I know it's a lot of work during the summertime, but I do appreciate their time and spending it here in Kent. It does make a difference. We had fewer incidents, so appreciate it.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions for the chief? All right. Thank you. Okay, we will move on in the agenda to reports. Each one of the, the council members up here on the dais work not only at these council meetings, but also on external committees. So they serve representing the city of Kent at the regional level, making sure that the needs of our residents are at the forefront of those regional conversations. So you will have an opportunity to hear from each one of them. I will provide a quick report. You heard the chief talk about both Cornucopia Days and Splash. So Splash is a wonderful partnership with our Parks Department, our Police Department, the Lake Meridian Neighbors Association, to bring those events of the day, as well as the fireworks show at the lake. And I just want to make sure to recognize all of those involved in that. And then same thing with Cornucopia Days. If it was not for the Lions Club, that event would not happen, and they do a fantastic job each year in conjunction with Seafair for the parade and, and all of the activities. And this year, we had an addition. The Kent Downtown Partnership also put on an event on Saturday, Salsa in the Streets, which was fantastic. Wonderful music, lots of people out there in the street dancing. So, I just want to highlight the great partners that we here at the city have with all of the different organizations around Kent. Couple of regional meetings. Last week, the chief and I attended a regional executive leadership meeting around gun violence in King County. All you have to do is turn the news on in the morning to know that in the region, shots fired incidents are up. So, some conversation around what does that look like in King County. City of Seattle and King County are both working to expand outreach programs, restorative justice programs, those kinds of things. So we had some conversations around how do cities, what, what role do cities outside of the city of Seattle play? Lot of conversation around what happens after those incidents occur, and I will say, one of the things that both the mayor of Auburn and myself brought up at that meeting was we also need to start working on that accountability piece. While the restorative piece is really important, when you take accountability out of the equation, I think it's part of what we're seeing now, the results of, of this increase in, in shots fired incidents. So, we will continue to stay engaged at the regional level, making sure that both prevention, intervention, and accountability play a role in how we help keep our community safe. The last report I have is on the Transportation Policy Board. I chair that meeting, and we, this last week, had an update on our federal highway grant process. This is a competition that Kent does very well in on a regular basis. We are, are hoping to receive several awards. There's one more step in the process, the executive board needs to approve those, so I'll have a final report out after that meeting. But it's, a lot of our investment in transportation infrastructure, that money comes through this competition. So I want to say thank you to our, our public work staff for always putting those applications together and then delivering on those projects as well. With that, I'm going to look to my right to Pat Fitzpatrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would note that the CAO, CAO report is in the council packet, and we do have an executive session tonight pursuant to RCW 4231101B to consider the selection of a site for purchase. I anticipate that'll be about 15 minutes, and there will be no action.
I was, it's going to sound weird. I was opening my email every morning going, okay, what critical incident happened? And I didn't get woken up at three in the morning, so for me, it was a great Cornucopia Days, but it was well attended, and I think it went off the way it should go off. And it's important to take a quick note, you know, with those back-to-back, we are mandating overtime for a lot of the officers and support staff. So it's a heavy lift. Heavy lift. They love doing it, but also there were some tired people after last Sunday, for sure. For sure. So good time with that. And last but not least, just one final plug. In two days at the Starbucks up north there at 224th and 84th, so some people call it East Valley, some people call it Door Central, 84th Avenue South is technically the address. We'll be doing Cop with the Chief. So come hang out with us, come meet our staff, come see what's going on, and get in touch with some of the officers that can address some of the problems going on in the neighborhood. So looking forward to that on Thursday morning. And with that, Madam Mayor, that completes my report. I'll take any comments or questions.
Thank you, Chief. Councilmember Michelle.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, I just want to thank all the officers who worked the Fourth of July, Cornucopia Days, all these events that are coming up. I know it's a lot of work during the summertime, but I do appreciate their time and spending it here in Kent. It does make a difference. We had fewer incidents, so appreciate it.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions for the Chief? All right, thank you. Okay, we will move on in the agenda to reports. Each one of the council members up here on the dais work not only at these council meetings, but also on external committees. So they serve representing the City of Kent at the regional level, making sure that the needs of our residents are at the forefront of those regional conversations. So you will have an opportunity to hear from each one of them. I will provide a quick report. You heard the Chief talk about both Cornucopia Days and Splash. So Splash is a wonderful partnership with our Parks Department, our Police Department, the Lake Meridian Neighbors Association to bring those events of the day, as well as the fireworks show at the lake. And I just want to make sure to recognize all of those involved in that. And then same thing with Cornucopia Days. If it was not for the Lions Club, that event would not happen, and they do a fantastic job each year in conjunction with Seafair for the parade and all of the activities. And this year, we had an addition. The Kent Downtown Partnership also put on an event on Saturday, Salsa in the Streets, which was fantastic, wonderful music, lots of people out there in the street dancing. So I just want to highlight the great partners that we here at the city have with all of the different organizations around Kent. Couple of regional meetings. Last week, the Chief and I attended a regional executive leadership meeting around gun violence in King County. All you have to do is turn the news on in the morning to know that in the region, shots-fired incidents are up. So some conversation around what does that look like in King County. City of Seattle and King County are both working to expand outreach programs, restorative justice programs, those kinds of things. So we had some conversations around how do cities, what role do cities outside of the City of Seattle play? Lot of conversation around what happens after those incidents occur. And I will say, one of the things that both the Mayor of Auburn and myself brought up at that meeting was we also need to start working on that accountability piece. While the restorative piece is really important, when you take accountability out of the equation, I think it's part of what we're seeing now, the results of this increase in shots fired incidents. So we will continue to stay engaged at the regional level, making sure that both prevention, intervention, and accountability play a role in how we help keep our communities safe. The last report I have is on the Transportation Policy Board. I chair that meeting, and we, this last week, had an update on our federal highway grant process. This is a competition that Kent does very well in on a regular basis. We are hoping to receive several awards. There's one more step in the process. The Executive Board needs to approve those, so I'll have a final report out after that meeting. But it's a lot of our investment in transportation infrastructure, that money comes through this competition. So I want to say thank you to our Public Works staff for always putting those applications together and then delivering on those projects as well. With that, I'm going to look to my right to Pat Fitzpatrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would note that the CAO report is in the council packet, and we do have an executive session tonight pursuant to RCW 42301101B to consider the selection of a site for purchase. I anticipate that'll be about 15 minutes, and there will be no action afterwards.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Boyce.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had our Committee of the Whole meeting today at four o'clock. One day we talked about we update our audits on how we collect utility tax. We're really trying to get it in line with our other taxes, and we hope to implement that the first of the year, so January 2025. Also, we talked about, I got an update on our insurance program. As you probably noticed, the last four or five years, the rate continued to go up, but this year, we're going to get a budget saving of $130,000, which is really good. Our coverage is still the same, and the policy is still the same, but that's a nice decrease in, according to the previous years. Also, I am the Chair of the Public Safety, so we are in the process of purchasing some computer equipment through a cooperative purchase program. Really, this is mobile device used to replace some of our old device with update software. And we also have 70 less devices by the time we get through. We also got a grant for Association for Washington City for 205K, and this is for domestic violent co-responder. So this is really a worthy cause, a one-year grant, and really excited with getting that particular grant. Also, I represent the City Council on PIC, which is the Public Issue Committee that is on the SCA. Pretty quiet night. We're still looking at a draft to take to the board around our Sallese, or how we handle that. So we had a lot of conversation around that, you know. At any day, I think, you know, Kent and some of the cities on the south end is doing a really good job of handling some of these here, but we're looking at ways to try to get other cities to step up. So very, very, very interesting conversations. I'll leave it like that. So I am going to start here to my left, and Councilmember Troutner, please.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyce. I sit on the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority Governance Board. I am Vice Chair of that committee, and Councilmember Alarmer and Councilmember Boyd also participate on the Governance Board. We have our meeting tomorrow evening, but I do want to say thank you to the RFA. They ran a very successful CPR training event and job fair at Showers Center on Saturday during Cornucopia Days. It was well-attended. The mayor stopped by. Board member Jovita McConna was also there. I stopped by. It was an opportunity for individuals and families to learn CPR training. They had adult CPR, child CPR, and then they had these super cool vests that you could put on, and then you would kind of do the Heimlich on yourself, or you could do it on someone else, and you actually, if you did it right, this piece of foam popped out. And so you kind of saw how that worked, and if you were doing it right, how to be successful. So really great event, life-saving skills that a lot of people participated in. Hopefully, that is an event that they will bring back next year. And then I also sit on the Regional Transit Committee, and we have our meeting tomorrow evening as well. That is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Michelle.
Thank you, Council President. I serve as the Parks and Human Services Subject Matter Chair, so I'm going to talk about that. First, I just want to thank all the Parks employees who worked for the Fourth of July Splash event at Lake Meridian. It takes a lot of coordination and work, and they also had to work on their day off, so I appreciate that. Second thing is, the Parks Department is looking for Parks and Recreation Commissioners. It's a great opportunity to get involved in your community and volunteer and learn about how the Parks Department operates. So if you're interested in that, you can go online or our Facebook page. And then lastly, we had a ribbon-cutting at Schools Out Park, and Council President Corr and Councilmember Alarmer joined me. And that is a playground that is at the, oh, no.
Laboratory Academy.
Thank you, Laboratory Academy. I was like, at the old Panther Lake. So their playground there at the school is now open and available for the public to use when school is not in session, and that's a great partnership between the City of Kent and the Kent School District. It's one of several that the Parks Department is working on, so really happy about that. That's Schools Out Park over at the Kent Laboratory Academy. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Sorry. Please.
I service as Subject Matter Chair for the Economic Community Development Department Committee, and during Cal this evening, we had two presentations, both related to the school district. In one way, we adopted a resolution to support the Mill Creek Middle School Stormwater Improvement Project. That is something we've been talking about for quite a long time. Moving forward, this memorandum of understanding was an important step in seeking the federal grants needed for that project. We also authorized a grant agreement between Kent School District and for a grant from ARPA funds for $460,000 specific to STEM training and STEM education and programs. So in addition to that, I serve on the King County Aging and Disabilities Advisory Council. We met last Friday. We had a presentation from Washington Cares Fund. There's, you know, I know there's a lot of controversy around this program, but I, you know, I will bring back and share that I learned quite a few things I didn't realize. I think we all know it as the Long-Term Care Fund, but what I didn't realize is that the things that can be, the funds can be used for are quite diverse. Everything from actually family, having a family caregiver paid for the family care they give, that is an eligible expense. Also, medical supplies, all kinds of home care applications, and I'm sorry, my website went down, but I encourage everybody to go out and actually take a look at the website and all the eligible expenses and the ways the fund can be used. It's far more diverse than I thought for a fairly minimal cost per month, so just wanted to share that, and that ends my report.
Thank you, Councilwoman Alarmer. Hey, I did forget one report. We did have our workshop, and we talked about the comp plan on 2044. Yes, and Kristen did a phenomenal job. Really, a lot of input from the people who live in the city. Councilmember had the opportunity to put some input in, and I strongly, strongly encourage you to go out on the website, take a look at it. Really, I'll talk about what we want to be when we grow up. So I want to give Kristen kudos to really just doing a phenomenal job and such a great leader. So thank you. With that said, Councilmember Boyd.
Yes, I'd like to say ditto what the Chief said about the Cornucopia. I had a great time Sunday, and if you didn't make it out there, hopefully you'll come out next year, because it was really wonderful. And also, I sit on the Governance Board, the RFA, Puget Sound, with Councilmember Troutner and Councilmember Alarmer. We hadn't had a meeting the last time, but this tomorrow night, we're having a meeting, and we're going to talk about some updates on FD cares. It's something I'm looking forward to hearing about because I strongly believe in that program. And other than that, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Fenter.
Thank you, Councilman Boyce. I want to remind people again about the concerts that are going on Wednesday, Wednesday afternoon, Wednesday evening, Thursday evening through our Spotlight Concert, our concert series that we have in the summertime that is both for kids and for adults. Again, that's on the website. You can get, see what the lineups are for each location, as well as the times, and again, that is all free. And then also, with arts, we have selected artists for the next round of traffic boxes. So all is good with arts. King Conservation District, we talked about redistricting, we talked about rates and charges, a lot of conversation around member jurisdiction grants and being able to pool that money for larger projects. So say you need to save the money that you're getting. One of the concerns was districts that hold the money and don't spend it. Should it go to another jurisdiction? Well, we realized that some districts need to pool the money for larger projects, so that will still be allowed. We have done that in Kent. So the maps for the redistricting, we've come down to a final selection, but those maps can be viewed on the kingcd.org website. And then Public Works, we talked about grants, both grants that we've received and grants that we're applying for. There will be, we had a wonderful grant that will allow us to do some visioning and work along the Benson, figuring out what do we want it to look like, kind of what Councilmember was saying, Councilmember Boyce. What do we want it to look like? And that's going to be decided by not only us and the professionals, but also, but there'll be engagement from our community members. That is a long ways off because they still have to get a plan, design, and all of that sort of stuff going. And I think that, oh, MED, no report from MED. So that is it.
Thank you, Councilmember Fenter. Madam Mayor, that ends our reports.
All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to public comment. Public comment period is an opportunity to speak to the council and mayor on issues that relate to the City of Kent or agenda items the council will consider. This is not an open public forum, and the comments that do not relate to the business of the City of Kent are not permitted. And additionally, the State of Washington strictly prohibits people from using public comment for support or opposition to political campaigns or any candidates. Lastly, please note that this public comment opportunity is for you to provide information to the mayor and city council that you would like us to consider, but we will not be able to answer questions during the public comment period itself. Kim, have any speakers?
I have one person signed up to speak, Brandon Keen.
All right, if you could join us up here, state your name and city of residence for the record, and we will put the three-minute timer up on the screen.
Absolutely, thank you very much. My name is Brandon Keen. I live in Kent. Last meeting, I was here to talk about a parking issue in my neighborhood. The rest of you recall, but Mayor Ralph, I don't think you were here this.
I was watching. I watched it. I was watching during the meeting, yep.
We all work from home. So yeah, the issue was, and still is, you know, we're kind of being treated like an overflow parking lot for Lake Meridian. And the last couple of weeks, after talking to Councilmember Fitzpatrick, and then, of course, Chad Beer in Public Works, who's just been, I don't think the guy ever sleeps. He's called me, he's reached out to me a few times to kind of talk about the issue. I've been talking to my neighbors, who I've come to find out, a lot of them I hadn't met before. They're just wonderful people, people of all backgrounds, young families, retirees, a couple roommate situations, people of all backgrounds, immigrant backgrounds, you name it. And we kind of, I asked them, I kind of passed out a survey and asked, would you support this neighborhood becoming? Pass this to me, Ralph, please. The question was, would you support? And their responses are overwhelmingly, yes, we would support that. Of course, that is no official vote, and I don't fancy it to be that, and I realize that there's a reason this is an ongoing issue, because it's not a simple issue. And that's something, like I said, Chad Beer has been great about getting back to me and discussing that with me. But I just wanted to share that with you, like I told my neighbors I would. One of the neighbors specifically asked me to mention to you guys that his biggest concern is his guests coming to park in front of his house when the no parking zone is active. For example, right now, until 8:00 PM, he can't park in front of his own house, his cousins, his mother, you name it, they can't legally park in front of his house. So his concern is, if it became a residential parking zone, could he get enough parking passes, the guest passes, to give to his family and friends? And I realize that's far down the road, and that's an if it ever became that zone. But that's it, yeah. And like I said, it's, we all know it's an ongoing issue. In talking to my neighbors, I talked to people who've been there for decades and had some pretty wild stories to tell me about the issue, but it's a real issue. It's something that we all care about, and our biggest concern is really just kind of safety and cleanliness. The Fourth of July, for example, we had, during the day, we consistently had upwards of 30 vehicles illegally parked on the streets there, and then after 8:00 PM, when it became legal, that doubled. And the garbage is just not fun to look at, and not fun to clean up. And the people urinating in front of your home is not fun to deal with, especially when you have toddlers running around the yard. So that's why I'm here, and that's mostly why, you know, the neighborhood supports it. So with that, thank you guys for your time, and I'll see you guys at the next meeting.
Thank you. We will make sure to get this into the record.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
There is no one else signed up to speak.
All right, thank you. Okay, item number seven is public hearing. We do not have one this evening. Item number eight is our consent calendar. Looks like we have items A through I. It's a compilation of work that the council has done at the Committee of the Whole meeting. They've had presentations, opportunity to ask questions, and these items have passed out of Committee of the Whole without any controversy. Is there a motion to approve consent calendar items A through I?
Sumo.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six-zero. We do not have any other business or bids, but we do have an executive session around property negotiations. We're anticipating about 15 minutes, and there will not be any further action following executive session. With that, if everyone who's not related to the executive session could please clear council chambers, council will start that session. A motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. We do not have any other business or bids, but we do have an executive session around property negotiations. We're anticipating about 15 minutes, and there will not be any further action following executive session. With that, if everyone who's not related to the executive session could please clear council chambers, council will start that session. Council has just finished an executive session on property negotiations. As I said before we adjourned to executive session, there is no additional action, so that brings us to the bottom of our meeting.